The next item is under Board Action. So, we can go to the first one, resolution to purchase real property at Nixon Road?
Chair Johnson, with the Board's support, I would do one presentation and then two votes. We'll handle both the properties. They have so much in common that I don't want to take extra time from the Board if we can help it.
Sounds good.
Very good. So, we have a few slides. I appreciate the work of the trustees. We wanted to put together as much information as possible. And trustees, we will be publishing a frequently asked questions document. We don't have that attached tonight, but you'll be able to see a few slides that we put together and some basic information on the two properties. So trustees, as you are aware, there are two properties that you all are engaged with this evening. 2081 Ellsworth Road, and the price on that property is $637,500 to be paid from the sinking fund. And the second property, 2700 Nixon Road, price $710,000. That property is adjacent to Clegg Middle School property and also adjacent to the recently acquired church property on Nixon Road. Trustees, it was just a year ago that we looked at and the Board purchased the property along Nixon Road that was the former church property. And it was back at that time that we became aware of an opportunity to really get some synergy on the Clegg property with the second property that has come available. Here's the photo of it, trustees, the aerial rendering so that you can see. And so trustees, this is 1.268 acres. It is adjacent to the Clegg Middle School property and recently acquired former church property. This is a sinking fund purchase. And I want to be clear that this is work on expansion. And you recall back in 2017 when we campaigned for the sinking fund, and we are always very grateful that our community supports us. And when we campaigned, one of the three buckets was accommodating expansion of enrollment growth. I will point out that off this Nixon property, trustees, you received a January 2018 growth study. And on that study, which is attached to your Board Agenda item, and trustees, you've seen that multiple times, the anticipated growth based on the current housing development in progress at that time was 664 additional students into the area adjacent to Clegg Middle School. So that would include King, Logan, and Thurston Elementary Schools, which are all fully enrolled at this time. Trustees, you will recall that we've not been able to accept very many schools of choice or in district transfer students in those schools because we've simply been full. But in those areas where there are some of those, that valve closes as we fill up with our own neighborhood schools. So, the recommendation is that the Board consider the purchase of these two properties, the expenditure to be paid from the sinking fund to relieve future enrollment pressure in the northeast and southeast areas of the district. This was actual information from our campaign back in 2017. So I just want to note to folks, we really do work very hard. Promises made, promises kept. That was our sinking fund campaign to expand and construct facilities to serve increased enrollment due to housing growth demands. Next, let's take a look at the property at Clegg. You can see there Clegg proper and the orange shaded area, which is immediately beside the recently acquired church property, is what we're talking about. It is 1.268 acres that is adjacent to Clegg Middle School, and the price that has been negotiated is $710,000. The next property is off of Ellsworth. You can see there the Bryant School building in pink, Ellsworth to the south, and the proposed property purchased there is shaded in red. That property is almost three acres, 2.956 acres. It is adjacent to the Bryant School property. What this does, trustees, the January 2018 growth study projects an additional 248 students into the Allen, Carpenter, Mitchell Bryant area. Although there is space available at Bryant, we absolutely know that's true, I will point out, trustees, that Carpenter has already had a modular added. It is full. Thirty additional students arriving at Carpenter this year. Allen has been remodeled. We've not added classrooms there, but it is absolutely full. It is a title school. Carpenter and Allen are title schools. And then Mitchell, trustees, we've added on to three times, a wing and two modulators. So, all of the schools are full in the area with the exception. I do want you to see in the northeast area, these are just a few of the "Come Buy a House Here" kinds of signs and brochures that you see when you're out and about in the northeast area. These projects alone show an additional 664 students coming in to the immediate area of King, Logan, and Thurston. If you go to the southeast, there's a lot of multifamily coming in, and there are also single-family developments coming into the south area. The resulting increase projected at this time is an additional 248 students. More growth is anticipated, and trustees, here are a few of the developments. We will have, these are the schools that we're talking about. We will, and you saw it just this evening on the enrollment report, we have added enrollment in all of these schools. You can see, with the exception of Bryant, you can see that we've added space, trustees. We've done everything we can. We've added about 22 classrooms across Carpenter and Mitchell, and I've left one off of that list, Carpenter, Mitchell, and we remodeled Allen. In the northeast, we've added about 20 classrooms across King, A2Steam, and Thurston. All of the classrooms that we've added are in full use at the schools. The additional complication, trustees, as you know, is with regard to land. One is the synergy and the opportunity to have land where the additional grade level, additional seats can use the existing infrastructure of the campus that is already there. If we were to leave the Clegg or Bryant vicinity to try to create a grade level or multi-grade level, we would need to buy 10 to 20 acres to be able to do that. The cost of that could range between $5 million and $20 million. So you can see, we get a real synergy when we find a property that is adjacent and can use the infrastructure of the properties we already have. The second complication, particularly in the northeast, is there is a real lack of appropriate available land, particularly up north. We can go much farther north, but trustees, you'll recall, as is true with Freeman, there are not utilities in all of those areas far to the north. So it does make it more complicated to build school facilities. The third area that's a complication with land is in order to be able to be thoughtful to plan ahead, with land, we need to look about six or seven years out. So when folks say, "What is your plan for this property?", we know the plan is for additional seats. Additional seats may be in a single grade or multi-grade configuration. We know we will need additional seats in the northeast and in the southeast. Over the coming two, three, four years, it will emerge exactly the grade configuration that we would need to use. But with land acquisition, you must think ahead. So where we're bringing to you this evening are the opportunities. And I want to talk about Bryant. The idea there, trustees, is that we would gain access. One of the complications with Bryant that we repeatedly hear from our parents there is the difficulty getting in and out of the school through the neighborhood. This opening onto Ellsworth would allow a second entrance into the property off of a main thoroughfare. We're putting in programming there with the international baccalaureate, with a preschool. The Bryant neighborhood, trustees, is the highest enrollment directly of students into Head Start in the entire city. There is the biggest concentration of students for Head Start right in the Bryant area. So being able to leverage that accessibility, to find the synergy right next to our current community school, to avoid putting our students on buses to go to the preschool and to go to other locations, we have, we can really get a single or multi-grade expansion, which we don't need today, but we know from the data, we will be able to use and leverage. What we're doing is making the most of a neighborhood school. And trustees, again and again, our community has said that their number-one priority, hopefully, is a walkable neighborhood school in every community. We're really excited about this property because it enhances one of our neediest communities, provides a synergy that we can't achieve having to arrive at the property through just the neighborhood entrance. On the Clegg property, trustees, we absolutely require relief at the schools in the northeast area. The development is going up behind Thurston now. Thurston will be a difficult school, a challenging school to add on to. I'm sorry, Logan, I meant to say. I apologize. Logan Elementary. Logan will be a difficult school to add on to, so we need additional seats in this area. We do get synergy with the previously purchased church property. And again, there is little land available in this part of the city to accommodate our future growth. Again, this is a proposed sinking fund purchase. Trustees, you know with the purchase of property, it is one of the very rare occasions where trustees do this work with legal and with real estate professionals. And it is not, as with all of our other items, it is not an item that we go out to the community explicitly for, but we are in the community every day, working with our neighbors and working with our schools, and you are aware of the needs. And so with that, trustees, we have Mr. Comsa, we have Mr. Dimitru with us, and we'll be happy to receive your questions. As you know, we've done with other purchases. This purchase authorizes our agents, Mr. Comsa, Mr. Dimitru, to complete due diligence, which involves the soil testing and all of the details. Trustees, you know that if anything is not appropriate in terms of soil quality or whatever, then the deal can be canceled. It is that you are authorizing the purchase from the sinking fund for these amounts. It would occur within 30 to 60 days.
We have until February 2nd.
February 2nd.
To do all our due diligence.
Would complete the due diligence period. So with that, trustees, we welcome Chair Johnson. We welcome your questions and are ready to have this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lazarus.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. I want to say that I support the purchase of these, both of these properties. Specifically, I feel that it's very important, and I appreciate the foresight that the previous Board had to purchase the church property when it was available. This Clegg property currently has kind of been patchworked over time. I believe you actually owned this, the district owned the whole parcel at one time. And to purchase the home, because it's a residential home right now, to come in and be able to convince the owner to take our bid versus the previous bid that that owner had on it, which was a very lucrative bid, so that we could actually make use of that, those spaces that kind of bookend that piece of property, is commendable. I appreciate that. Now, that property there, just in the front side along Nixon, will be much more usable and be able to have the use, a maximum use there, along with the church property. So, I saw the developments that you showed for the northeast side. I am aware that there's many other ones up there that were not on there. So, there's apartment complexes up there that are poised for families to move in there. There's other developments, housing developments further north on Nixon Road that were not featured there. So, that pressure from just the new developments are really going to, we're going to need this land in order to develop this and be creative with the three other schools that are in that area. So, and for the Bryant property, it is a very odd shape, but I think we can be creative. I think the architects can be creative to utilize that land to the maximum use and improve the access to the school and have a better presence in the community so that the community can understand the importance of the value of having a neighborhood school in that area. So I support both purchases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Gaynor.
Could I ask a preliminary question of Mr. Comsa? We're always interested in transparency here. Usually, we have a first briefing, one meeting, and then the vote the next. Because of the nature of this, this was added to the agenda only at the beginning of the meeting, and we're voting on it today. Can you explain why that is so?
Because the majority of the trustees decided to put it on.
Why, is it the Board's request to put it on and vote on it immediately? Or are there other legal reasons why, or practical reasons?
Practical reasons, we need to close on the property so we can continue to do the due diligence, and we have that till February 2nd. And so that timeframe is closing. The Board has no meetings until the next one, and I think is in January.
Okay. So maybe my question as to the Executive Committee of why it was not put on the agenda?
I would offer the practice for real estate transactions is it's one of only three areas that I'm aware of that the Board can conduct in closed session. Real estate, Mr. Comsa, and the superintendent's evaluation, and legal matters.
And negotiations. There's several items that you can handle in closed session.
So there are only a few items that can be conducted in closed session. Real estate is one of those because if we were to do a first briefing, tell the whole world that we're preparing to do, to buy this property, it could change the nature of the transaction. It could put the buyer in an uncomfortable position in terms of someone could come in with a higher offer for the buyer. So, practice over many years of my work with Boards is that those real estate transactions, and that's why the law allows you to do them in closed session, to learn about them and to process them, is it is your job as trustees, as you all know, is to have the best interest of the district at heart. And if we were to have that as a public discussion, certainly the nature of the terms of the deal could change in between.
That's what I was looking for, that explanation. But the negotiations have been completed, I understand, and it's up to the Board to approve?
Yes.
Okay. So the question of putting it on the agenda at the last minute is an Executive Committee? A Board decision?
It's the practice of Boards, every Board I've ever been around, because the revelation of a real estate deal in advance of a Board vote could negatively impact that transaction.
Even after the transaction has been agreed to?
The transaction is agreed to pending a Board vote. So if you all don't vote tonight, which is your option, then we don't have a deal.
Yeah, that's understood. Okay. I do have an apology to give. I went on Board Docs, and it hadn't been on there, but this afternoon, late this afternoon, I signed in on the public site and I saw the item was there. And I did post it, because I always post the agenda on my Facebook page. I was alerted by an extraneous Facebook friend that it wasn't on the Board Docs when he looked at it. It turns out I had not logged out of the previously privileged, the private space. So I deleted it as soon as I knew that. But I did want to issue that explanation and apology for doing that. And I do understand the reasons why there isn't a large period for this. Thank you.
Do we have another comment? Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. What's nice about these presentations is sometimes I come in with a question, I get the answer before I even have to get the microphone. And so one of them that I really want to highlight, the answer that you provided in your presentation, was the comparable cost. Because that was really important to me, to understand the ability for us to save, I mean, what was it, between $5 and $20 million just in land purchase to create a new campus, but by being able to bundle land and do, you know, a shared campus in some regards, the numbers are just so stark. So thank you for answering that before we got to it, and I appreciate your patience while I reiterated it. I also want to say that, you know, there are no regrets in growth in Ann Arbor. This is not a have-to situation. When the state overall is losing population, I think we should be mindful to be really grateful that our community continues to be a destination community. I would like to say that it's because of schools. I think it's certainly a part of it, but we know that there's so much riches in this community. It's what attracts people here in times when the state overall is, can be struggling with its population. And these are real. You know, the growth report from January of 2018 was akin to like a proposed budget, right? We were proposing that we would need to build for this many students. And I, you know, I've been past some of this land. I've done some Google image searching to see what it looks like from above. These things exist. This, and the question I have is, you alluded earlier to an updated report on that growth study. Could you give us just a little sneak peek at what might be in some of that? Whether it might include some projected to actual numbers? Are our buses picking up as many students as they thought they might in the developments that are finished? Because I think that growth report, which I know isn't ready yet, and I think we're all interested for, will really just help make the case that our budgeting, whether it's financial or whether it's in terms of enrollment, tends to be pretty good. And so if you could just give us a little sneak peek of what you do know, and then we'll try to be very patient and wait for it to come out next month.
I do appreciate your patience. Trustee Lazarus, and you both have alluded to what we all know, and that is, there are more and more developments every day. I just heard from the city about one, and Andrew was off to take a photo of it, additional affordable housing. And what is not clear that you heard in January of 2018, and you'll hear again this coming January, it's always not clear what age of people, families, will purchase. So, we will be monitoring to see if it's younger kids or middle school kids or high school students. But I am concerned about this upcoming report because it is, our growth is exploding. And I am very concerned about us being prepared for that and closing the valve of allowing any other students in. I mean, I feel like we're in a position where we're going to have to change our approach. And quite frankly, that's bothersome to me because we've not been in the business of telling people no. And that's going to be a shift for us. So, I don't know factually, but I know anecdotally is all I'm sharing with you, Trustee. And particularly that the townships, the development in the townships is going. So, I teased you earlier, buckle up for January 22nd, but I really do believe that's going to be an eye-opener, the growth that's coming. Yeah.
Well, and to clarify, you said we're not in the business of saying no. We don't get to choose our business when it comes to our resident students.
That's right.
So if a development comes into one of the boundary, the catchment areas for a building that's already above target capacity, never mind actual 100% capacity, we don't get a choice. We're educating those students, if it has to happen in a, you know, back of a school bus in the parking lot, that we have to do it.
We must.
And in terms of equity and appropriate education for all of our students, we need to have the forethought to do it in a responsible way with buildings that have walls and floors and heating and windows.
I really appreciate you saying that because it's been a luxury that we've been able to allow other students in. And you're absolutely correct, there's no choice about students who live in our area. One of, I was in conversation with one of you yesterday about these properties, and I do want to add, Trustee Gaynor's good question about how these properties come forward and get voted on the same night. But I do want to add that the trustees have been updated back from the beginning in our private enclosed conversations. So you've known about this, it's part, as I always say about that word, trust in your name, is that in your title, is that you're trusted with decisions like this. But the concern that I have is you see districts getting into middle schools with two shifts in the day, or elementaries with two shifts in the day. Those are the kinds of situations that districts can get into when enrollment explodes and we're not prepared. And I know our bar is set high in Ann Arbor, so folks expect us to be five, seven, 10 years ahead of the curve and to have our buildings ready and to welcome students on the first day. And so you understand, trustees, and I know you share it too, there are some sleepless nights involved, and are we going to be able to stay ahead of this? We were also discussing recently how grateful we are to have the 2019 bond because as we're looking at the demand of having our buildings outpace our enrollment growth, I frankly don't, we could not do that without this bond. So for those who think perhaps we didn't need it, this is a perfect illustration of all the reasons why we need it. Thank you.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Thanks so much for answering those questions. We really have to build as we learn. We have to build and find out the answers. As we build, we talk about it at work, like an airplane. You build the aircraft, you actually fly the aircraft, as you figure out who wants to ride on the aircraft. Thank you to our previous Board. We've been at this a long time. We've been out to sites. We've stayed in contact with our City Council members, and so this isn't new. This is years of conversation and planning. Thank you to the new Board for the continuity in this work. That hasn't necessarily been the case with all of our efforts. Sometimes there was a second guessing or re-guessing of work that had already been planned, put into. into place, and so I'm glad to see us value the work that's been done, trust that work, even as we are learning, the newer trustees, learning about the growth that many of us have already studied, and trusting that we move forward. And the last thing I'll say is that this is the kind of effort that implores trustees, do the diligence, do the work. When we come to this table, it would be my ideal, that we are bringing answers, not necessarily throwing out a multitude of questions that the general public would have. Our job is to garner those questions and then come get answers to those questions. And so when we're at this table, even when we're raising the questions, we're providing the answers to the public, demonstrating the team play that we have here. And so I look forward to trustees viewing ourselves, not like some of us may have on the campaign trail when we were making assertions, but now as informed trustees, who again, we have the opportunity to work closely with our team, with our superintendent, there's literally no reason for a trustee to come to this table with a question. Trustees should come to this table, raising the questions that they had, and bringing the solutions that they found out for the public. That's the due diligence. That's what's needed prior to posting any information online. It's one thing to pull it back down, but misinformation is out there, and that's not necessarily what we want to promote, especially when it's not necessary. And so I look forward to us continuing to talk about this good problem that we have in growth, and making sure that our actions and our votes align with the expediency needed for the growth that we're seeing in this district. Thank you so much.
Trustee Baskett?
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate the aerial shot, because this is, may not be clear to folks. So the red box is the proposed purchase. North of that red box, or above that red box, if you will, we own that strip of land as well. So although we have not built on it, we own that already, and then you can see Bryant School further to the right. So it's not like we're buying patches, this is a piece that will give us direct access. Right now, we're talking about a driveway, if you will, onto Ellsworth, correct?
We would love to have that, yes.
I mean, that would be very appreciated, as those of you who know, I live in the neighborhood, and Bryant was never meant to be a school with so much car traffic. It is a nightmare getting in and out. Currently, you can only get by vehicle to Bryant, that one way down Champagne to Santa Rosa. So this will be a great relief for those of us who live in the neighborhood and have to time our lives around pickup and drop off. I will acknowledge, though, Ellsworth right now is a traffic nightmare already. For those of us who live in the area, again, we know how to get out of the neighborhood the other way, but I just wanted to acknowledge that there's traffic already on Ellsworth. There is pressure around the city, as we mentioned, a lot of building, people are coming, you know, wanting to get to wherever their spots is by these, once they were backward ways of getting there, now it's just people plan for it. So I just wanted to acknowledge, we know it's going to be a headache for some. So my question, first of all, then I want to congratulate the CFO for the price on this. As I said, I live in the neighborhood, and I saw the board go up regarding the price, and you have done phenomenal negotiations on getting this price to this point. So thank you, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now then, my question regarding when, so assuming we have approval tonight, how soon can we get started?
So we still have some due diligence to do, and that should be complete by February 2nd at the latest. And I believe after the due diligence is completed, if we don't have any issues, within the next, I believe, two weeks after that, we can close.
And so not to overpromise, but will the Bryant's families have a new driveway by September? I had to ask, you know that.
No comment at this point.
All right, fair enough, fair enough. Thank you.
Trustee Gainer?
Thank you. Before I ask my questions, just a quick note that my apology stands about posting this, but I want to be clear that I just posted the agenda item, land purchase. I did not disclose any details, I knew enough not to do that. I, most issues I come to the evening, pretty sure on how I'm going to vote. I am not tonight, I have, I just was very eager for the discussion. So I want to bring up some points, I want to ask some questions, and I like responses from everybody, just to help me with it. I was the lone vote against the purchase of the property adjacent to Clegg, that was the church, and then the daycare. I didn't think the reason of people who were driving to Clegg being inconvenienced was sufficient grounds for it. And the property itself was in disrepair, and it was a small area. I was actually glad to see this new purchase adjacent to it, with the hope that we could do some meaningful construction on it. And before I get into that, I meant to add that the increased population, increased student population is a given. Apart from the school board, I advocate for greater density in Ann Arbor. So I have no question on that count, there won't be increased population, increased students. Our elementaries are, we haven't gotten capacity figures yet, but we know they're close to bursting, and especially in the northeast quadrant, where we, you know, we don't have a large number of schools of choice, we don't have the in-district transfer yet, but it's pretty clearly an area of need. My concern, my question is how we're going to use that land. We've been, the trustees have been briefed with possible sketches, and at best, the construction, or of the plans that I've seen, would only be for two grades, a building that would home to up to two grades. I think the Bryant property, what I saw the most was three grades. And I'm questioning, and Dr. Swift briefed me on this on Friday. My question is, is that a feasible option, to have a building with only two or three grades, and would that fit in with the model that we have across the district? Or is there a way we can use the area at Clegg to build a new elementary school? I know, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself with the bond. I know we're talking about the need for building schools for staging, and I thought, this is great, this will fit in well together. But I do have reservations about the practicality of a limited grade building. I don't know if anybody would, if Dr. Swift or anybody else would like to speak to them.
So we have a number of options available, innumerable options available with this property, and it isn't, I would invite the trustees, don't just think about the additional parcel, think about the whole parcel. And the size of the whole parcel there at Clegg, we could do any number of things. And I would emphasize that that's a planning process that will proceed from here. But we really have to see what grades the pressure is going to come from in the northeast. Will it be more of a lower L pressure? Will it be an upper L, or will it be a middle school? We don't know that yet. I do receive your concern about one or two grades. I will point out that we have a lot of grades on small pieces of property all over this town currently. So, I mean, in terms of, we have whole elementaries like Pittsfield on a very small piece of property, so there are lots and lots of options.
Yeah, I guess I would have liked to have seen those options among the plans, but okay.
Trustee Lazarus?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to that. I do have some experience in development and urban planning, and one of the things is, is that these properties that were presented here tonight are taking advantage of the properties that we currently own and they're contiguous to each other, so that it makes sense for us to purchase them, because we know that the pressure of enrollment is coming very soon. So it makes sense, logical sense, and the price is right for us to purchase these. Luckily, through the sinking fund, we do have the money to purchase those, so that's all positive. The planning process comes after you secure the land, because we know that we need to develop this land to accommodate the increased enrollment. And how we actually maximize the use of each piece of property is the challenge that we have to present to our architects, to our planners, to the developers, to present to us very real proposals. You know, we saw some very back-of-the-envelope, you know, some ideas, which had way too many corners on them, I might add. So we'll smooth those things out. But that is the challenge of the board, to make sure that we communicate to the, to Mr. Latzana, and Mr. Demetrius, Demetrius, sorry, and Dr. Swift, the desires of the board, to make sure that those needs of all the data that we receive are actually met and understood. And so it's a little premature, I hate to say that, to have these designs in front of us, because there's so many unknowns, and you don't want to invest in that expense of investing in the architectural costs and the development costs before we have the property. I think it's not feasible and best use of our very precious funds. So that is how I would respond to that.
Trustee Baskett?
I would concur with trustee Lazarus. I think trustee Gainer, the vision, I think we don't do enough visioning and understanding. There is a difference between ideas and plans. We have ideas right now. We don't, as trustee Lazarus, it would be folly, and again, we'd have plenty of people there accusing us of wasteful spending if we invested a lot of money in planning and we had no land. I mean, we can't do anything without acquiring land, and land is very valuable and hard to access in this community. So we jump on it when we can. And if we have, as others have said, we're leveraging what we have, it saves us actually money in the long run, it helps us prepare, again, the visioning for the future. So right now, we have ideas versus plans. I understand you wanting to have a plan, but then we'd be accused of planning before we have anything. So we have to take one step at a time. Again, let's purchase the land so we can act on some ideas and planning. One of the things that we, another thing we have to keep in mind besides growth is what does the, what does the community want? Again, the Bryant community was tired of being dumped on and given less than, so this will help us acknowledge that this was not, this little building was not meant to handle so many commuters. So let's alleviate the pressure and help, again, build goodwill within the community that we've listened, and we're developing ideas into plans to help the future. So think about visioning, and acknowledge that plans will come with input from not only us, but the community, and of course, our experts. So I hope that helps you.
I appreciate both of your comments, thank you. And appreciate that the land purchase is available now, even though the need is later, that's part of, you know, part of the concerns. Let me bring up another issue. We're talking about the growth at Carpenter and the need for additions and how tight it is, but in the supplemental enrollment information we were given, we were also given schools of choice data. And I know this is a complex situation with former residents, and I also acknowledge that I had voted against schools of choice based on, more on principles and philosophy. But the facts are that at Carpenter, there are currently 166 schools of choice students, that's over a third of the enrollment. At Mitchell, there are 105. At Abbott, there are 25. When I first came on the board, the question was, are we going to have to build more buildings? And I was given the data of schools of choice broken down by school and grade, and that was very helpful, and I came out with the statement that, no, we're just filling in spaces. But given that once in, these numbers have become very large. I mean, it may not be exactly the, I understand the 166 people aren't forming six separate classrooms, they're spread out over all of the grades, but it's still a high number. And are we growing, you know, to what extent, in the South especially, are we growing due to schools of choice enrollment, and how much of it's our residential enrollment? So that, again, that's just been another issue I've been wrestling with.
I want to share, trustee Gainer, that I absolutely receive that concern. What has happened all over town, and you heard about it this summer, as you began trustees to receive emails from families who've been denied, because as an area fills up, those valves of schools of choice and in-district transfer, those valves close. And yet, on our perimeter schools, in Carpenter, in Mitchell, and Thurston even, our perimeter schools, particularly perimeter schools in areas of dense need and poverty, where families may be moving frequently along the perimeter of the district, I so appreciate the trustees giving us the option to not further disrupt a child's education, because they've had to move to an apartment or a condominium across the street. And literally in Carpenter's neighborhood, that's how it goes. Unfortunately, with schools of choice laws, we don't get to say yes to one because of their story, and no to another one because their story is different. We have to open, but I do see, trustee Gainer, as we've seen in areas like King, and I could name other schools like that, that that valve will close, and I predict-
There's very few at King right now.
Right, I think less than one hand. There will be a day when we will not be able to accept in Ann Arbor, and that'll be a sad day for me, because it will cause children to have to disrupt both their home environment and their school environment, particularly vulnerable children.
One more area, and this is personal, I know I'm an outlier here. Another one of my side interests is on active transportation. This came up with the purchase of the property next to Clegg, that there are so many families driving their students to schools, that it's creating a safety issue, it has been. The Traffic Safety Committee has been wrestling with this, looking at solutions, but not dealing with the overall, you know, the overall problem or cause. Many families don't need a reason not to take the bus or to walk to school, but we are exacerbating this with the number of in-district transfer and school of choice students we're taking in. And again, it's hard for me to condone a policy where we're putting increased demands on the roads and on parking, and even for our land space for, you know, for parking, even though I understand that's the city parking minimum, that's probably completely out of our hands. So again, I understand that I'm an outlier here, but I did want to mention it.
Thank you. Since I'm presiding, I like to let all the questions get out, so, but I do have a couple, a couple of really quick ones. One thing, one comment that I wanted to make is that, Dr. Swift, I'm glad you mentioned the stories behind the numbers. I think that when we start talking about school of choice and some of these topics, sometimes we look at just plain numbers as if they're just digits on a page, and we have to think about the impact that it, that making these decisions has on these actual children who are coming into the district. And so I do, I am encouraged that the questions come up about that, because I know that people think differently about this, and that we're able to talk about it. We, so as we, in another piece I'll mention, is that what I saw in this, in this presentation was that the growth that this is, this plan is designed to accommodate is for actual organic growth, or growth within the, within the district. In my mind, somewhat keeping the in-district, or in-district transfers and/or out-of-district or school of choice somewhat constant, we'd still need it. So I think that in a way, that is a separate discussion, that I wouldn't want to cloud this topic. So real quick question, or a couple of quick questions. You talked about the, a lot of times I look at this and I say, okay, this is what it would cost to do it, what would it cost if we didn't do it? And I noticed that there's an estimate around 5 million to 20 million to purchase- a contiguous, large piece of land to accommodate some of these things. Were there any thoughts about building up? And do we have any idea of what our communities would think about having like taller schools instead of some of these broader schools?
That's a discussion that I look forward to the board having as you lay out your plans for the bond. Because those are some of the fundamental values that you all have alluded to, is are we going to go up? And certainly, we know some of our neighbors would not be happy if you all chose to go up. But that certainly is a way, Trustee Gaynor, to get back to you liking the property more thoroughly. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The other question that I had, Trustee Baskett commended our CFO on getting a good deal on this land. How do we know that we're getting a good deal? And that we're being responsible shepherds of the community's investment?
So the Bryant property was for sale for 1.2 million. So we were able to purchase it for 637,000, which is almost half. And I do believe the previous owners bought it for 1.2. The property on Nixon Road, the owner already had an existing offer of 700,000. So, but the owner also would prefer that the school district gets the land. So we were able to offer $10,000 more in order to acquire the property.
His preference, talk about the stories. His preference is to have his family land used for school as opposed to a business deal.
Awesome. And then very last question is, so how would this be paid? Is this like a mortgage? Is it paid over a number of years? Is it just cash? What, how does that look?
It will be a cash purchase using a sinking fund.
Okay. So it's, so we wouldn't make payments? This would be-
No, this would be, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Trustee Gaynor.
Yeah, the other question is, what is the sinking fund money could otherwise be used for? But, you know, it's all very complex. I don't know if I should say now or when we go to vote. This is the most uncertain I've ever been on a vote here. When I voted against schools of, I think it was schools of choice, Trustee Kelly asked if I would vote the same way, if it made a difference to the vote. And I was a little bit insulted. I was voting on principle. But in this case, it might make a difference. I'm not, I think I know which way I'm going to vote, but I'm not absolutely certain. I don't think I'd be comfortable voting either way. I may take the GAD, my GAD fly role just to register that questions are being asked and issues have to be dealt with, even though I'm quite certain it won't affect the vote.
Okay. I think we've had a good deal of discussion and people know that there was, it was vetted. But, you know, GAD to the fly, I guess, if you want to do that. So if there's no more discussion, do we just do a-
A motion.
Can we have a motion? We'll have to do them each separately, correct?
Yes.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the resolution to purchase the real property on Nixon Road?
I motion to-
Okay. Moved by Trustee Lazarus, second. Seconded by Trustee Kelly.
So I move that therefore, the Board of Education resolves, one, the board has concluded that it is in the best interest of the district to acquire the purchase and purchase the property from seller on the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase agreement presented to the Board of Education, which purchase agreement is hereby ratified and approved. Two, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, or either of them, or any officer of the Board of Education is hereby authorized to take any and all actions, perform any and all actions, approve, execute, and deliver any and all instruments, documents, or certificates in such form as they may determine appropriate, including, but not limited to, signing the purchase agreement, paying the purchase price thereunder, and executing and delivering any other document contemplated or required by said purchase agreement with such changes as may be necessary or desirable, but not materially adverse to the interests of the district, and any and all other documents necessary or appropriate to consummate the purchase of the property covered by the purchase agreement. And three, all resolutions or parts of resolutions of this board which conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed and rescinded to the extent of such conflict.
Can you read the address?
The purchased property's address is 2700 Nixon Road, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48105.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded?
Trustee Kelly.
Yes.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Yes.
Trustee Gaynor.
No.
Trustee Baskett.
Yes.
Vice President Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And so we need a motion to approve the real property on Ellsworth?
Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Baskett.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Lazarus. Can we have the resolution to be read?
Shall I?
Yeah, I not even get it.
I have it. So same thing.
Therefore-
So I move to purchase the property of 2081 East Ellsworth Road, Ann Arbor, Michigan. Therefore, the Board of Education resolves, one, the board has concluded that it is in the best interest of the district to acquire and purchase the property from seller on the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase agreement presented to the Board of Education, which purchase agreement is thereby ratified and approved. Two, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, or either of them, or any officer of the Board of Education is hereby authorized to take any and all actions, perform any and all actions, approve, execute, and deliver any and all instruments, documents, or certificates in such form as they may determine appropriate, including, but not limited to, signing the purchase agreement, paying the purchase price thereunder, executing the mutual releases contemplated therein, and executing and delivering any other document contemplated or required by said purchase agreement with such changes as may be necessary or desirable, but not materially adverse to the interests of the district, and any and all other documents necessary or appropriate to consummate the purchase of the property covered by the purchase agreement. Three, all resolutions or parts of resolutions of this board which conflict with this resolution are thereby repealed and rescinded to the extent of such conflict.
All right. So it's been moved by Trustee Baskett, seconded by Trustee Lazarus. Do you have a roll call?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Trustee Kelly.
Yes.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Yes.
Trustee Gaynor.
No.
Trustee Baskett.
Yes.
Vice President Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus.
Yes.
Motion carries.